On our morning show today from WRCL, we talked to a couple of members of the Richland County Board of Supervisors, David Turk, Board Chair, and Vice Chair Steve Williamson in the studio with us today to talk about the many things that they have going on, and there are many. Dave, good morning. How did the recent community forum go?
The forum went really well, Phil. I want to thank everybody that took the time to come out for it and engage with us. We got some good questions from the audience that we were able to address. And it was good from the county's perspective to be able to talk about some things, but also from a cooperation perspective. We had, you know, people up on the stage from not just the county, but the city, from Simons, from the Simons Foundation, from the school district. So just to be able to show the community, hey, we're all talking together, we're all working together here, and address questions in that context was a wonderful thing. And again, thanks to those who organized it and put it on, and thanks to those who took the time to attend. And I've heard from a couple of people who caught up with the recording online too and had a chance to watch it. So it is available out there on YouTube and encourage anybody who missed it that wants to catch up with it. Hey, go find it on YouTube. It'd be worth your time to listen.
Was there some good input then from the meeting?
I would say there was, like I said, good questions, people wondering about things. And so we had a chance to address that and just give folks an update on where things stand, because we really hadn't talked a lot about that with the campus. With Simons in particular, there have been some questions that people have had and a chance to share, hey, these are some of the things we've been talking about lately. So it was great to be able to give that update and then have some one-on-one conversations afterwards individually with people too.
Steve, county board used to be maybe a little bit more chill. I don't know if it's that chill anymore. You've got a lot of things going on, don't you?
Yeah, when I started a little over eight years ago, nine years ago, we had nothing like what we've got on the agenda and priority list as we do going into 2025.
Right, busy, busy times. What did you take from the the community forum?
Very good. I sat back and counted. I think there was somewhere between 75 and 80 people probably there. Wrote down a few of the questions, learned a few things from previous board members that may help us in the future. So it was a good, a good reaction of people's involvement. Would like to see a little bit younger age group there, but I know most people in the next age group, younger than what was there, are usually pretty busy, so.
True. And certainly, the campus reconfiguration is probably one of the top questions, wasn't it?
It was probably half the questions, Dave, I think, were related to the campus. And we do have a meeting scheduled for our Campus Reconfiguration Committee for February 12th, 6:00 PM at the County Boardroom. I don't, do you want to lead into that, Phil now?
Sure, yeah.
So yeah, our, between Dave and I, we can kind of update where we're at with that. I'll let Dave take over. He's the chairman of that, and then I'll chime in as well.
Okay, yeah, 6:00 PM on February 12th, that's a Wednesday. And it'll be available online too. We have online links to most of our county meetings. So if people can't be there in person, they can join online and hear the discussion. And it also is recorded, so if anybody wants to catch up on it after the fact, they can find those on the county website as well. But we haven't met for a while, so it's going to be a chance for us to touch base and see where we are. Our consultants, who've been doing the property assessment, are going to be there to catch us up on what they've been doing in this interim while we haven't been meeting, and they've been doing quite a bit, from two aspects, the campus property itself. And then we had just started at our last CRC meeting to talk about our space needs within the county, which is the other aspect that they've been studying for us. And to refresh people where we stand with that, they took a look at all the campus buildings. They also looked at the courthouse in addition to it, to the HHS building across the street from the courthouse, to give us an idea of, okay, what are the conditions of these buildings? How well do they line up with the space needs of the county presently, and what are the possibilities? What we found is that the former grocery store that now houses our HHS, the Community Services Building, is probably the most flexible and usable building that we have in our portfolio right now that they studied. Because it's all on one level, it's easily accessible, and the layout is kind of flexible inside it. So for those reasons, it's pretty usable. It has some challenges. It's heated by a conglomeration of residential furnaces, for example. So we may need to do some investment in that property to make sure it's good and usable moving forward for a goodly number of years. But that was good news. On our other building across the street, the courthouse, the news, maybe not so good. It is, and people call it a historic structure, the courthouse itself, and it has a lot of history and it's been there for a long time. But it's a big old building. And when you're trying to use that type of structure for what you currently need, you run up against challenges like trying to drill, you know, data cables through two-foot-thick brick walls, you know, things like that. So it has challenges as far as flexibility. The courtroom presents a number of challenges for court safety, for meeting current standards for what a courtroom is, for access to the courtroom, and just traffic flow of participants that take part in a court hearing, whether they're defendants, jurors, whatever it might be. And there are limited things you can do within that structure to try to address some of those situations. So those are aspects that they're analyzing for us. We've known for some time that our county jail has deficiencies. The state inspects it every year. We get a report. The list of things that they find keeps getting longer. And many of them are not things you can address within the current structure of the jail. It's outdated. We are still being allowed to use it for now. It is conceivable that at some point the state might say, no, no more. You have to do something else. And we don't have anyplace else to put inmates right now, so that would mean sending them other places, which is operationally, then you've got to be shuttling people back and forth, and there's a lot of cost and time involved with that. So we need to be thinking about what our solution will be and coming up with something here in the not-too-distant future as to how we're going to address that. Those are the conversations we're starting to have with the consultants now.
It's a tough call, because as you mentioned, the courthouse is a historical building, you know, and people would hate to lose that as well, but.
Yeah, and, and, you know, it's not necessarily that we want to bulldoze it or anything, but what can you do with it? And so those are some of the things they're thinking about, whether it's within the current footprint of that block that we occupy, or do we have to look elsewhere? The initial analysis they did, okay, so let's say we wanted to build a brand-new county government complex that had courthouse, jail, all our offices and everything all together. Ballpark on that was north of $90 million. We can't even borrow that much money. So that's above our county's borrowing capacity, so that solution is not workable. And so what we'll be looking at is what can we do in phases to address the most pressing needs first? And we'll be outlining a plan, and all likelihood will stretch over 20, 25 years to address everything fully and be able to deal with it financially. We don't know what that'll look like yet, but just, you know, to set a level of expectation, that's the scope of what we'll have to look at to meet the county's long-term space needs.
Yeah, always have to look ahead. We're not looking at something that would be just the next year or two change, you know? You're looking down the road. Probably anybody that's gone to the courthouse, Steve, it isn't the most user-friendly trying to find, you know, where you're going and everything like that.
No, that was one of the first things I remember when I got on the Property Committee, was we had elevator issues. And I said, nobody's been putting money away. We know this elevator is not going to last forever. So I, I could be wrong, but it was somewhere around $100,000 fix on it. So again, we had to dive into our general fund, because we had not been putting money away for CIP, you know? So that has changed since we started the administrator role. We're still putting money in and increasing it each year for building maintenance. We've got a list throughout the county and county buildings, projects, and then they are prioritized, reprioritized usually each year, because something changes. And yeah, with the addition of all the work at the campus, well, now that has changed a lot of our workload. But yeah, getting in and out of the courthouse itself is not easy. And for a while there, the elevator was only going to the third floor, but as far as I know, it's been working correctly currently.
Anything that David said that you'd like to chime in with, Steve?
No, I think he covered it very well. It's, yeah, it's just probably a matter of time before something happens as far as the jail. So we have to keep preparing for that one. You know, we're looking at, he said, courthouse security, you know? Hopefully it never happens here, but we, it could, so. Plan for it happening possibly, but, and be prepared, so hopefully it never does.
And the county's space needs are kind of driving how we're looking at the campus property right now too, because that's one possibility is, okay, what could we use for buildings that are already there? Or the real estate space that's there to help address some of the county's needs? We don't have answers for that yet, but that's one thing we're looking at. We do know that the condition of the buildings out there is not good. We've gotten details from our consultants on that. It seems like every time they talk to us, the news is a little worse than it was before. We had our initial community meeting that we had at the White House months ago, where we, we kind of broke the news of the initial notes we were getting from the consultants that things weren't looking good. Well, we got more detailed information, and we found that two of the buildings in particular, what we commonly call the classroom building and the library building out there in the campus property, were in shape such that it would cost more to update them than it would to build a new building from scratch. And so we made the difficult decision that, you know, in view of that, to try to minimize our cost impact, right now we're looking at paying, you know, $10,000 to $12,000 a month for utilities on those properties out there for buildings that are pretty much vacant. And so we decided to turn off heat and electricity to those two buildings, the back ones on the property. The consultants told us, if you take that step, you know, what you're saying is you're not going to use that building anymore, and destination is probably demolition for those two buildings. And so, again, not an easy decision to make. But realistically, we felt that was in the best interest of the county, both, you know, financially and planning-wise, that yeah, that's, I think, what we're going to have to do. No decisions have been made on the other buildings yet. People talk about like the Science Building as being the most recently updated building, which is true. It's most recent. That doesn't mean it was recent. So it has some updates, but about half the building is still in similar shape to the other buildings, where you've got things like single-pane windows, and they're not sealed well, and there are brick issues on the outside, and a litany of different things. The HVAC system in that building is more up-to-date than the other buildings, but we've had issues with controlling it, so we had to figure that out. But some of the other buildings, you know, you've got major systems that are of the vintage of when the buildings were built. And you're talking, you know, 60 years or so old, and they have lived their expected life expectancy and then some, so.
Well, and there's sentimental value, and I mean, you're an alumnus of the Roadrunners as well, but at some point, you gotta kind of look ahead, don't you?
You do, and that's a really difficult part, because there is a very strong emotional attachment with the community. And that's why when, when the closure happened, it was so devastating for so many people, because it had been such a long part of our recent history, you know, over 50 years. It had been an operation, and so many folks have been through there, like myself, yes. And so we're a ways past that initial emotional shock now, but the emotional tie is still very strong to the property, and you'd like to see something really good happen there. But we've got to deal with the realities on the ground as they are right now. We're trying to balance, you know, the interest of, we can't go too quickly, because we want to make sure we make the right decision, but yet a clock is ticking, and every month we're paying out more cash. So we do feel that we do have to do something before too long here, because the county can't shoulder that ongoing cost burden for a long stretch of time.
Steve, anybody that's experienced a vacant building, we know that they don't get any better when they're sitting vacant. They go downhill pretty fast, don't they?
No, you can drive around the county to our empty barns, you know, empty dairy barns. If you don't keep them up and keep animals, people, or whatever in them, they just go and even turn in, like Dave said, they told us that, you know, if you do this, power and water, you are writing these buildings off, so, to an extent. So not everything worked as planned. A couple of valves to shut the water off didn't shut off 100%. So we have to run a little electric heater in the library building, if I remember right. So just because those valves haven't, sometimes haven't been used since they were put in possibly, so. The other thing out there that is in the process is the bridge. The bridge, we'll call it the West Bridge, you know, going like into Simons, that one was deficient. You know, we couldn't even get heavy equipment. Delivery trucks technically weren't supposed to be going out there, but we don't have real big, heavy delivery trucks going there anymore. So that is in the process, should be taken care of this year. I think it's actually out for bids right now.
Yep.
So that's, that's the plan to get that one fixed, and the second one, who knows? You know, things may change. We may not need a second one, may become another footbridge, but it all depends on what we do with the property in the future.
So the money that the state granted for campus, you know, reuse, or whatever the case might be, that's going, a lot of it's going toward the bridge then, Steve?
Correct, yep.
No?
Yeah, I misspoke about that the other night at the community forum. We're actually using up some of the last of our COVID-era money on that bridge.
Okay.
So we have, we are working on applying for the $2 million grant. We haven't got our application in yet, but Derek Kalish, our Acting Administrator, and Josh Elder, our Acting Deputy Administrator, are working on the finer points of what we have to have together to apply for that money. And the state is saying, okay, you have to tell us what your plans are for the money when you apply. So that's what we're formulating right now, is what we'll do with that. But yeah, we had some COVID-era money left over. We had to commit by a deadline, and so we put that towards the bridge project to get it done.
Okay. When the bridge project starts, then you will utilize the other bridge while that one is being torn down then?
Yep. Yeah, and that's a advantage right now to having two bridges there, so.
Sure.
Yep, so people coming in to access Simons, they'll have to come in through the east entrance and work their way up to the parking lot then while the bridge is being worked on. But it should be done hopefully by late this summer. They're doing a very much off-the-shelf design, so it's not a huge engineering challenge. Fortunately, our County Highway Department had engineers under contract for projects, and we were able to tap that and get a design together fairly quickly. Last year, when we had the flash flooding out that direction, both bridges were underwater for a short period of time. And so that actually influenced the design of the new bridge. They'll be putting in a couple of feet higher. So if that happens again, it'll still be above water.
Sure. So the $2 million that we talked about, you have to apply for yet, that would go for other things, especially if you do have to demo, right? Would go to something like that, Steve?
Yes, yes. Derek and I spoke a little bit the other day, and he did say that, you know, he asked the, they had a call with the person at the state and said that that money could be designated for demolition.
You talk about the consultants, Dave, then, are they continually working? How does that process work to get you the information back to the county?
Yes, they are continually working. They'll be at the Campus Reconfiguration Committee meeting on Wednesday night, the 12th, so giving us an update on what they've been working on. We engage them to do an in-depth assessment of those campus buildings and our other county properties. The other part of what they'll be doing is helping us with our plans for moving forward, coming up with a comprehensive space needs and facility use plan that involves not just the campus buildings, but other possibilities to meet these future and current needs that the county has. So we'll be dealing with them for a while moving forward. And then when we get to the point of, okay, we're ready to do some kind of project, we'll have to, you know, go out and hire other people to manage that, but we're not close to that yet.
The big question I get is about the gym, obviously. A lot of people have been talking about that, maybe utilizing it with the school. Any further along in those plans?
What we shared at the forum is still the status right now. We're talking. We are working on an MOU, or Memorandum of Understanding, with the school district, because they would like to utilize that space. And so we're trying to figure out the way to let them be able to do that. The campus gymnasium, the floor is in fantastic condition. It was redone not too long ago, from what we've been able to understand. And the building itself has some needs, like the locker room areas, for example, are not in the best of shape. That really needs some attention. Some other areas of the building need attention, but it's usable. And so rather than have it stand completely vacant, we'd love to be able to see them utilize it if we can figure out, okay, who unlocks it, turns on the lights, cleans the floors, things like that. We're working on that right now. Longer term, there have been a lot of conversations out in the community about what could we do with that. Some people suggest, well, Simons should just take it over, or the school district should get it, or, you know, different ideas like that. Again, we've started some conversations looking at those possibilities, but nothing is in writing yet, so.
There is money to be spent though on that building, because if I remember from your initial report, Steve, that a lot of the electricity and everything for the grounds comes right through that space? Is that correct?
That's one of the challenges. Also attached on the south end is a maintenance shop, and two big boilers, original boilers are in there. And I, if I'm not wrong, all the power, there's one, another room as big as this room we're sitting in, that's just all the power that comes in there and distribution. So that's some of the other challenges. Again, we'll work with the engineers and the consulting firm to develop a plan if, you know, if we go that way. I think Dave spoke about it a little bit at the forum. A lot of the area out there where the soccer fields and stuff is floodplain. So there is, you know, there's no, really no possibility of building within that floodplain, so. Or in future needs there, so. Where the buildings are now is about where, if anything's going to happen in the future, would have to be or further north, up into the ag ground and stuff like that, so it's a ways away.
You do utilize the, someone utilizes the soccer field all the time, and the walking trail and everything, though.
Yep, the school district has been utilizing that, and we've worked with them on, you know, having that available to them for use. We also use that soccer field. That's when they drain the Simons pool. That's where the water goes. So, you know, having that piece of land be what it is is probably what it will be moving forward. But yes, the school district does get to use it. They're willing to help out with mowing it and stuff, so that's a wonderful arrangement.
What about, where is the property line there for that? Because I know that it goes up the hill, past the Simons, and.
I'm not exactly sure of the boundaries, and that's something we've got to look at. Moving forward, we want to make sure that we leave enough room around Simons that, you know, should they get a fund drive going and decide to expand at some point, they have room available to do that. So we wouldn't want to have any future development encroaching upon their ability to do that. There are walking trails that go up in the hill behind Simons. They've been maintained, and people enjoy that recreational opportunity. I would love to see us preserve that and keep that going. It makes sense with whatever other things Simons does to have that opportunity available right there with them. There are the tennis courts out there that were built with a DNR grant back in the day that stipulated in perpetuity that property then needed to be open and accessible for public recreation. One of those things where you sign something, you take the money, and you may not realize what you're on the hook for in the future. So, excuse me, we got to figure out what we can do with those to either improve them for their current purpose and get them open and accessible to people, so we're in compliance with that, or some other public recreation use that they could be open and accessible for. And again, conversations are happening, but nothing's been decided yet.
Yeah, awesome. Well, we'll switch gears and talk a little bit more about some other things going on in the county with Dave and Steve coming up here. We're talking to members of Richland County Supervisory Board, and we'll have more right after these words on the morning show. Our community conversation continues on WRCL Radio. Dave Turk and Steve Williamson here from Richland County Board. And switching gears a little bit, you've got some job openings to hear.
Yes, we do. We, our county administrator, Candace Pash, decided to go back home to Minnesota and took a job back there. So we presently have an interim administrative team. Derek Kalish, our county clerk, is now also wearing the hat of interim county administrator. Was going to be here with us this morning, but had to work on some financial project that we've got going. We'll talk a little bit about later, but couldn't be here with us, so Derek is busy with that. We looked at the interim job and said, my, there's a lot to be done here. So we also appointed an interim deputy administrator, Josh Elder, our current County Highway Commissioner, serving in that role. They've been working well together. It's nice to be able, they can kind of divide and conquer some tasks, tag team on some issues. And they've stayed in close touch with the board, so it's working well so far. And the recruitment is going on right now for our next county administrator. I heard from the firm that's working with us, PAA, Public Administration Associates. They're the same firm that helped us with our last administrator search. They have some applicants, so that's good news. They were working with Chippewa County, and Chippewa County had a ton of applicants for their administrator position. Multiple, I think it was 70-some, he said, if I remember the number, Dave Bredel told me right. We don't have that many, but the fact that there are applications coming in, it's been a challenging environment to recruit in for a county administrator, a city administrator positions like that. It's very competitive, and you do a search much wider to try to bring in the right candidates. So the fact that we're getting applications is definitely good news. You know, the timeline is the recruitment is open through, let's see, I got the notes here. Derek put it.
February 7th.
February 17th. So shortly after that, they will be bringing to our Executive and Finance Committee their top candidates that they have found, and we'll have a chance to set up interviews. And that'll stretch into March. We're hopeful that by early part of May, if everything goes well, we hopefully could have our new administrator in place.
Job description-wise, has anything changed for the new one? Any other hats to wear?
Not necessarily big changes, but I think this idea of having a deputy administrator is something we want to have some good conversation about. The way we had it set up before, you had your administrator. If that person wasn't available, there was no clearly defined, okay, so who do you go to with questions? So I think looking at setting up the assigned role of a deputy administrator, not that that'll be a new job or a new person, but to assign that responsibility to somebody is something we will definitely be looking at, so.
Whoever you hire has got some challenges ahead to face, right, along with everybody?
Yep, yep, and it's, it's an environment of frequent and constant challenges. But, you know, Candace, I think, did a good job for us in getting some directions set. And what we've told the search firm is we want to find our next administrator to continue with us on this journey, so.
Well said. You recently said goodbye to Marty Brewer, Steve.
Yes, yes. I talked to his wife. We had a pretty good showing of people up at his, what did they call it?
Time of remembrance.
Time of remembrance, yes. And Dave got to speak a little bit. But I talked to Connie, and I reminded her, and I wrote it in the card as well, that when I joined, Marty was basically my mentor, you know, when I joined the county board, you know, over eight years ago. So I really appreciated that, and his heart was in Richland County. You know, he just, if you read through everything he's done in his lifetime, so. So yeah, unfortunately, he lost his battle with cancer, like a lot of many people have done in the past, so. But we will be looking to fill that position eventually here. Not real, real quick, but we'll be talking about it and get it, it's got to be advertised and everything the proper way, so we will be looking to fill that position on the county board.
Is there a specific spot where you need to live to fill that position?
Yeah, it would be in which district Marty represented. I don't remember what the number was, but it would have to be in that district. You probably got the list there in front of you, I think, Phil.
I think, no, I don't actually. So, sorry.
Okay. But yeah, it would be from Marty's district, which is in the, you know, north of Richland Center area.
Right, okay. So did you want to fill us in anything that you said in terms of what you said at the invitation?
Marty was my predecessor as county board chair. He and I got on the board roughly the same time. I think he came in one term after I started and had a chance to work together on a number of things. Part of being at his remembrance service was hearing other people talk about all the other things that Marty had done in his life and the influence he's had on people. And what I was able to share is just, you know, the fact that when he came in as board chair and into a leadership role, was all about, okay, we need to do things better here, and we want to do it the best way that we can. He was very much aware of, you know, we've got a responsibility here to do the best job that we can for people. And if that means working together with other people, we do that. If that means changing something about how we do it, then we do that. And what I said was, we will be continuing to build on a foundation of things that Marty got started. We will continue on a path that Marty helped lay out, and so his impact is going to continue to be felt in Richland County, you know, for decades to come.
You know, the way I look at it about what you guys do too, you know, maybe you don't like what's going on nationally. Maybe you don't like what's going on in the statewide. Well, you should start locally and try to make a difference in your community, and that's probably why you're both are on the board, right?
Yes, definitely.
When you look at other things that are coming up here, Steve, I know we wanted to ask you about the airport. Could you give us an update on the airport?
Yes, the Tri-County Airport is still called Tri-County Airport, even though Iowa County got out. I think it's officially out a year ago. It took a long process, never happened in the state of Wisconsin to remove, so they didn't really know how to do it without, they can't change the name, because it's in all manuals and everything that anybody flying a plane understands more than what I do. But, so it was not changing the name, but they have their own airport in Mineral Point that's used a lot. So with the whole flooding process that we went through and the damages to the terminal building, they just decided that it was time to get out. So now it's down to just us in Saw County. Saw County has four members. We have two members. I'm one of them. Marty was the other member, so eventually we'll be filling that position as well. We meet monthly, like most other boards or committees. We're in the process right now of doing the remodel on the terminal building. The engineering and design is in 2025. The remodel will be 2026. The share, cost sharing will be 95% fed, 5% state, so just a local match for us in Saw County is 5% of the, of the whole project for both the design and the building itself, so, which is very impressive. So if we were to try and tear down and rebuild with the regulations by FAA, we would not be able to put up as big a terminal building as we have. So we're better off remodeling what we have. It's not in real bad shape, but it needs HVAC and roof and some cosmetic stuff, probably windows and stuff like that. But the engineering firm will design, will figure out all that and our new design within the footprint that we already have.
What about the airport at Sextonville? Are there some changes, is some upgrades coming there as well?
Uh, that is all city and.
That's city? Yeah. Okay.
Uh, I know Mayor Todd had said something, him and I spoke a little bit the other night, uh, uh, because somebody questioned that. And I said, no, they're two different entities, so.
Good to know. I know they do have some upgrades coming there as well. What about the radio tower project, Dave?
Uh, radio tower project is moving forward. We've made some progress in the last month or so. Uh, where we had been hung up previously on some lease issues and things like that with, uh, some of the vendors we're working with. But right now they're estimating about 65% completion on the radio tower project. And they're looking at a total completion and implementation date by August of this year. Uh, it'll be done in operation a little bit before that, but they need to do some final testing once all the leaves are out and everything to make sure you're still getting, uh, the proper strength of signal and everything like that. And to get all that certified will stretch into August. Uh, but we had a couple of holdups on a couple of sites where, uh, lease negotiations had been stalled for a while, but they have moved forth and, and gotten agreed to. Construction has been happening. You know, winter weather influences your ability to do construction. And we've been pretty fortunate not to have a ton of snow to deal with. So we've been able to make some progress on sites. We'll try to push past that 65 and get towards 80, 90%. Equipment has come through. It's not that we're waiting on equipment or anything like we were a couple of years ago on things. Uh, so it's, it's just a matter of, uh, now that we have access to those last couple of sites, we can get in and do what we need to do to get equipment in place, get it operational and, and bring it up. And what they've told us in broad terms is it's not that they have to wait and throw a master switch. As the sites get completed, they can be brought into service, so.
Okay. And so that should happen later this year then?
Yes, yep.
You've saved a lot of money by not plowing a lot of snow this year, Steve, right?
Yeah. So hopefully, uh, that will help us in the long run. I, I tell everybody after our last couple of weeks of nice weather, just hold on because we will pay for, we will pay for it. And we've all been here in Richland County long enough. And we've got a little bit coming up this weekend, it sounds like, but we've been very fortunate. I've never seen the woods as dry as they are. We're doing a, uh, logging harvesting process on my mom's property. And the skid trail is powder dust. It's dirt. It's turned to powder. I've never seen that in January, February. So it's, that's why people are asking, why is there so many fires? Well, it's very dry. Humidities are very low. Uh, there's no snow cover, no moisture. So it sounds like we'll be a little bit safer coming up here. But yeah, it's, uh, I, like I say, I've never seen anything in the woods like it is right now this time of year.
It's a dangerous situation.
Yes, it could very well. Yeah. Look at California. We'll, we'll, we'll never experience anything like that here just because of the topography and terrain and, and our fuel types. But, uh, Lone Rock areas could be somewhat close to that someday, you know? It's still, still an issue with all the pines and, and the housing within, so.
So the snow isn't a bad thing at this time.
No, we do need it for the agricultural part of our areas. I mean, we need moisture.
What about, uh, any highway projects in the county for the year that you'd like to talk about or anything forthcoming?
I'm not for sure. I'm actually headed out by Josh after I get done in here, uh, to kind of get a long range plan of where we're at for 2025. I believe right here in front of the radio station is supposed to be done this 2025, if I'm correct.
It's 26, I believe.
26, okay. Uh, if it makes it till 26, we'll be lucky.
We'll have the County O project coming up too.
Yes, County O project is the big one going out past Pine Valley. So that one is, they're already starting to clear trees and, uh, they've got everything staked out. So the land acquisition, I think, is complete on that. So that is, that'll be the biggest one that most people will see around here. We'll do our, uh, repaving of usually six, seven miles a year. We try to do, depends on what, what our costs and estimates come in at, so.
And those aren't cheap either.
No, no.
Getting worse. Um, Dave, wanted to ask you about 2025 then, uh, you know, as, as you move forward, uh, some goals?
Well, we, we need to come to a, a conclusion on what we're going to do with the campus property. One of our conversations at the campus reconfiguration committee will be about, okay, what is our priority for that site? What do we want it to be? Uh, if you talk to folks in the community, there are a lot of different ideas. You know, should it be used for an educational purpose, a recreational purpose, uh, from a purely economic development perspective? Housing, all kinds of different possibilities. So we need to figure out, okay, what is our priority? Uh, county space needs may play a large role in that. We'll see what, uh, what we have with the committee. Uh, just in the short term, and we have elections coming up and that's something, you know, Derek is busy with wearing the county clerk hat. Uh, we have a spring primary coming up real soon here, February 18th. Uh, there is a statewide primary for superintendent public instruction. Uh, there will be a couple of municipal primaries in the area, town of Buena Vista Town Board Supervisor. Uh, North Crawford School District has a primary. And so that'll be happening February 18th, and then the regular spring election is April 1st. And there will be again statewide races for Department of Public Instruction, Justice of the Supreme Court, and a Court of Appeals judge in our area, um, and lots of various municipal and school district races to be determined as well. So, uh, that'll be coming up for people to be aware of. And that, that, uh, primary coming up February 18th might sneak up on people because you might not think of election that early, but there will be some things to vote on there.
And so you're still taking public input and things like that, uh, you know, with the campus project and all that?
Yeah, we are. Um, we haven't, uh, said, you know, like bring us proposals or anything like that. But people have been good about contacting us with ideas and giving their input. Uh, one of the biggest questions we get is what about the stuff? Cause there's a quantity of items still left in the buildings that Platteville left behind. Uh, we haven't had the time or resources to deal with a lot of that yet. We want to create a process that gives everybody a fair shot who's interested. Uh, whether it's equipment from the science lab, or we've heard there are some pianos out there, other musical instruments, things like that. We want to not just hand it over to somebody, you know, because if a school is interested in it, well, there are multiple schools that touch our county. So we want to make sure it's an open process. So everybody has a fair shot. Uh, we're looking to perhaps partner with an auction firm to come in where they could do an inventory of all the stuff that's there and handle the sale for us. Uh, we're not under any delusions that this is going to be like a moneymaker or anything. We just want to, you know, give as fair a possible shot for everybody to have what it is they're looking for. For groups that have stuff on the property that is theirs, for example, the Alumni Association or, uh, Community Players Group. Uh, we've tried to facilitate their opportunity to get their stuff out of there before any of this happens. Um, and so they can certainly reach out to us if, if there's something of theirs that's still in the buildings that they need to get access to.
Last time you were here, I think we talked about it. I think it was Marinette where somebody came in and bought their theater and, and took it over. But that would be a huge undertaking for somebody, wouldn't it?
It would be. Um, and, and just looking at our community, we have a downtown community theater building that's, you know, been, where they're working on renovating and raising money for. Uh, our high school has a wonderful auditorium that they're going to be putting some money into to update. So again, you get back to emotional connections. That campus theater has seen some fantastic productions over the years. Uh, but realistically with the present condition and just realistically, who would be willing to take something over like that and run it? I don't know the answer to that. So that's a difficult question for us to wrestle with.
It would be something on the, the board though. I mean, if somebody was legitimately interested and, you know?
They can certainly come and talk to us. Like I said, we're not at the point of making those decisions yet, but we want to consider possibilities as we move forward. So yeah.
The school district I know took over the, the East Hall, you know, the charter school. Was that like the best shape building of all of those or?
I don't know if it was the best shape, but they, they purchased it from us and put some money into it to fit their purposes. Uh, Steve Board shared at the community forum that the, the charter school's been going very well. They're at capacity and they have a waiting list. So it's been quite a successful venture for them. And hopefully they can build on that success, whether it's within that building or whatever other possibilities we can work out.
Uh, I know another thing I want to talk about for 2025, uh, and, and beyond, Steve, but you have some dreams and goals for hiking trails. Could you talk about those?
Yes. Uh, most of the people that, uh, have heard me speak about it, uh, I've, I even told, uh, the mayor Wednesday night, it's the first he heard about it, but I would like, my goal is to get a hiking biking trail from the city of Richland Center to the Ash Creek Forest right along Highway 80. With the addition of the trail out to the now known as the intermediate, intermediate school, uh, we're a little bit closer. So, uh, eventually when time allows, but ever since I've started dreaming of this, we have been very busy and haven't had time to look into grants. I, with some assistance with a, a lady I used to work with at the D N R, I got a grant to plant the trees around the courthouse. We had to take down all the ash trees, you know, and there was one maple to take down. So those trees, I, every time I walk into the courthouse, I'll take a look over there and, or walk by them. They, they are doing very well. And we planted various species so that in the future, if a new disease comes within the realm of our forestry industry, that, uh, they would not be all one species again, like every tree but one or two, two trees. Two ma, two maple trees and the rest were all ash in the parking lot and all the way around the courthouse building, so.
Then they had to be taken down then?
Yes, yes. And, uh, I actually, if you haven't been in the courthouse, you can see a, a couple of benches. They're called the Leopold benches that we took one log home to my place. My nephew sorted out. My son and a friend built the benches and then Foggy Bottoms and Musketee finished them and, and engraved them. So they're on two different spots within the courthouse, actual wood that came from the original ash trees on the property.
What a great idea.
Yes.
Yeah. Kind of recycling reuse a little bit and preserve the wood.
If there's anybody out there that is willing to tackle, uh, writing grants, if you get a chance to drive down by Bosco Bell, right, uh, along Highway 61, they've got a beautiful trail that runs from the city out to their boat landing to the north towards the Wisconsin River. That's really kind of where I got the idea. And their goal is getting it to Woodman. And eventually I believe they're going to try and eventually get it to Wazika. So they've got a long range goal of a long, longer trail than what they have.
We're fortunate, Dave, to have, uh, well, you know, we have the Pine River Recreation Trail as well, which a lot of people utilize.
They do, and it's seen some improvement over the last couple of years, uh, uh, to make it stable for the use it is. And, and people walk it, people bike it. Uh, it, it's in such an amazing setting. And so to see people utilizing it is awesome. And right now you can go from the Pine River Trail to that trail that goes out to the intermediate school. Uh, the trail continues into the city and you can walk along the Dyke and Crosscut Park. And so, uh, it's just an amazing recreational opportunity to be able to see a lot of the, the cool things in the area.
Richland County Fair, anything changing for that in 25?
Uh, not changes, uh, big stuff. Uh, obviously looking to do continuous improvement. Uh, we brought some entertainment in this past year. I know they're looking to do that again. Uh, Lyrica is our, our fair director and she's, uh, this time of year, she's in the planning process, so.
And she's also still the recycling coordinator as well for the, for the county then? Okay. So that, uh, that was one of the questions we had. Um, um, PFAS, is that, uh, anything? I know that's been in the state news here a lot lately. Does the, the county have anything in terms of, uh, to deal with that or cleanup or anything?
I don't know that any, we've had any conversations related to that. I know people are concerned about those chemicals, you know? And I don't know if it's something that emergency government has dealt with at all, but certainly people who do, you know, water quality testing and things like that are, are dealing with that. But we haven't had any, uh, issues perk up for countywide addressing at the board level, so.
And again, the important meeting is coming up, uh, next week for the campus reconfiguration. Could you talk about that where that's going to be held and everything?
Sure. That's in the Richland County Boardroom, 6:00 PM on, uh, Wednesday night, the 12th. And there is also a virtual connection to it. When the agenda is published, it'll have that link on there for, uh, being able to click on it and, and attend virtually. And anybody's welcome. Uh, we have a number of items on our tentative agenda to talk about, but the big one will be, you know, touching base with our consultants and seeing what status is, having that conversation within our committee about what our priorities are going to be moving forward. Um, and then just giving any updates that we have on, on current status of stuff. So we invite people to come. There is a, a time for public comment on that agenda if anybody wants to comment. Of course, with a public comment, no action is taken at the meeting based on that, but certainly people are welcome to speak.
I know that it's, it's primetime ground there as well, the campus with, you know, the expansion of Panorama Estates and everything. So, um, you know, that, that could be a hot topic for the future.
It could be. There's, there's a lot going on on, on that side of the city. And, um, you know, in talking with folks, if you just look at the geography of the city of Richland Center and how the hills kind of frame us in, if you're going to do future development, you, you look at certain areas just because of where they are and the campus property would be one of those areas. You know, you have floodplain to deal with on the front end of the property from Brush Creek. But as you look back and there is land out behind the campus buildings that could have some potential. For what exactly? We don't know yet, but there is potential.
As you took over as board chair, uh, you were kind of blindsided like, what, a week later or something like that?
Yeah, I had been chair for less than a week when we got the email notification from UW System that they were shutting down and walking away from the campus property. And so that was a, a very rude awakening in a new role.
And one other thing related to that too, I think there was some misconception about how much money was going to be allotted or, or provided.
Right. When the, when they started talking about the grant program and, and the grant program was set up by the legislature and signed by the governor, totally separate from anything related to UW System. Different dollar amounts were talked, just kicked around. Some people were saying like five million. It, it turned out to be two million, the, the amount they settled on, uh, per campus. And it's not just us, it's other two-year campuses that are closing or eligible to apply for this grant. And you have to apply for it, uh, when they came out with the initial application materials. It had language in there that, uh, had a bunch of legal stuff about releasing UW System from any liabilities and things like that that was not part of the original legislation. Uh, we pushed back on that through various channels of legislators and, uh, different state officials. And they did remove that language from the grant stuff, so it's no longer in there. Uh, what we do have to have is a plan of how we're going to spend the money. So we're formulating that right now to get our application in and hopefully, uh, get that money to help us with the transition. When you look at some of the needs out there, two million doesn't go very far. So we've got to figure out, okay, what do we invest that in that's going to set us up for the best future possibilities?
Yeah, it's interesting because when it came out, it seemed like they were just going to write you a check and here you go, but.
That was how it sounded.
You gotta jump through a few hoops, it sounds like.
Yes. And, and it's not unreasonable for somebody to hand you $2 million to want to know what you're going to do with it. That, that makes sense. But yeah, we, we do have to come up with that plan and know where we want to channel that.
Anything else either you'd like to add here this morning? You've been good guests. I, I always appreciate you guys coming in and being transparent. I know that, uh, there's a lot going on.
I would just, uh, say to remind folks, yeah, we are in an administrator transition process. Uh, in addition to the administrator and county clerk hats, we're also, uh, down a finance director at the moment. So Derek Kalish is actually wearing three hats. Uh, and so, you know, you, you may not know what hat he has on any given time you're talking to him. So just asking folks to be patient with us as we work our way through this. Uh, we are recruiting for that finance director position as well and hope to get that, uh, filled fairly soon, but we'll, we'll see how that goes. Again, it's a fairly specialized position, so challenging to recruit for. And, uh, you gotta have the right fit when you bring that person in, so.
Excellent. Steve, anything else?
Uh, I, one thing I didn't talk about much on the Ash Creek Forest, we are updating the forestry management plan. Uh, with the possibility of, if we do the right research, we can apply and become a county forest. And that makes us available for some possible funding in the future. Two, I'm looking at way down the road is acquiring additional property. So, uh, so that, that is actually, got a meeting this Friday with a consultant to, uh, and then with the plan, we'll be able to do harvesting. And there's plenty of places out there that we can be doing some planting as well. Replanting, uh, areas that, uh, the not quite wanted trees are living.
Wonderful. Great way to end on a positive note here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Uh, Steve Williamson, vice chair, and David Turk, board chair of the Richland County Board of Supervisors on today's morning show.